Hello, everybody. First of all, thank you for taking time out of your busy lives to come here tonight and snack on desserts and talk about things on the town warrant. Wonderful little thing. An exciting time in Conway. You may have to bring a paper bag so you don't hyperventilate, but we have a race for the Select Board. We have three candidates, which is pretty much an amazing thing. We don't have the Parker and Steerfield did, but it seems like we're getting close. So, at this time, I'm going to give each of the three candidates two minutes to say what you want. Two minutes is plenty enough time to get yourself in trouble. I will allow them two minutes. Bob, would you like to start? Bob Baker?
Hi. I think most of you know me, so a few new faces in town. I'm Robert Baker. I'm running for Selectment again. I have been in the town economy for 73 years. I have been Fire Chief for 44 years. I was hired as Superintendent for 20 years. So, I know about most all the budgets in the town and how the town operates. I've kept a very, as you want to believe or not, if you look at the fire budget over the years, I've kept it at a very minimal operational budget as we could. If you want to compare the county's budget, fire budget with other towns, it's about 20 to 30 percent lower than anybody else's. And we have a very good force, very active force. We have 18 volunteer firefighters. So, I know how to keep budgets low. Somebody asked me the other day why I was thinking of running for Selectment again, and I said, "I think the biggest concern in the county right now is to be able to do more for our seniors." We have a lot of seniors on fixed incomes, most of them, and tax bills keep going up and up, and I think we need to find more and more ways to offset the costs for the seniors. I understand we have a couple of programs going on right now in town, but I think we need to do more. Because to me, being a senior myself on a fixed income, I know what it's like. And I'm sure most of you seniors on fixed incomes know too. It doesn't get any easier, it gets harder every year for us. So, we need to try to do whatever we can do to help just the seniors in a little better situation. Thank you.
Elaine Campbell.
Not quite 70 years, almost 30 years I've been in Conway. I've been involved in all sorts of service in Conway. I was on Concom for, I think, nine years. I've been on school committee. I actually can't count how many years, a lot of years. I know the biggest budget in town is the school, and we try to be very reasonable with that as much as we can because school budgets really depend on union, teacher union contract. Our biggest expense is the teachers, of course, which we want to invest in. This is a gem of a school, and I think we do a very good job of taking care of it. Both my kids went to the school. And it really is, it's also our emergency shelter. And we have to be very cautious and kind to the school. Right now, we have, we started a fund to prepare for things that might break. We started that quite a while ago. I think the first thing we started for was saving for the furnace that might go someday. And actually, it's been a really smart move. I think now the town is moving and doing things like that from warrant article two. So, I'm also a clinical psychologist. What town can't use a clinical psychologist, right? Which means I'm a trained listener. I don't think Select Board members should just have their own agenda. I think they need to listen to all the residents of the town and be concerned for what their views and their concerns are. I agree, seniors definitely need some attention. And we need to think out of the box a lot because costs can keep getting higher. I think we need to be responsible while also continue to invest in our town. Because I'm sure all of you are here because you know what a gem this town is. Only 30 years, but that 30 years is, I mean, I brag all the time on how much I appreciate this town. I drive every day to Holyoke, and when I hit that sign that says Conway, I just go, "Ah, I'm back in Conway." So, I'm very invested in helping take care of this town.
Our last caller today, I'm just going to say this because I, you know, it's just the sitting chair of the Senate.
That was Woody. Yeah. Sorry, Woody. I played basketball yesterday in the rainstorm, so I'm sitting down.
Stand up.
Yeah. Running for reelection, been on the Select Board six years now. Before that, I've been on Frontier and Conway Grammar School, well, a long time. Conway Historical Society president for years before that. My kid will all go through all the schools he's been to. Yeah, so, you know, I'm glad to hear, you know, everybody else say that they want to help seniors and that they want to keep costs down. I think, I'll just speak about what I did just in the past year. The person that brought forward the concept, you know, the Senior Tax and Property Write-Off was me. That's what we voted on in December. The person that started the program for Conway Senior Transportation Service, the Conway Senior Uber, a one-of-a-kind program that doesn't exist anywhere else in the state, that was me. The, you know, the person that got the Mass in Motion Grant, the Mass in Motion Program fleshed out with representatives from the key committees in town, planning the senior, senior prom, June 1st, the day of the town meeting at the town library, things like that. So, and the person that got the Council of Aging to increase their request for the first time, many, many years in the budget from $1,200, which they've been flat at for like 20 years, to $3,000 so that they can get more nursing and foot care planning stuff. So, you know, on the one hand, yeah, you don't want to have your own agenda, but on the other hand, you have to have your own goals that you're willing to just do and undertake, you know, use the position that you have to do initiatives, et cetera, and make things happen. I've been on the Budget Committee of the Schools for 12 years, besides doing these budgets for six years. And I think when you look at this budget, this budget is cost for a 2.98 increase with significant cost of living adjustments, every significant proper job salary increases for the positions that needed salary increases so we could be competitive with other towns. The budget is a requirement, is a mirror, if you will, of the Select Board and the Select Board Chairs' goals.
I'm going to ask you.
So, I think it's a good budget.
Jimmy, can I just interrupt for a second? 10 seconds. Our state Reverend, Natalie Blay, is here. I don't want to say anything, but I just want to acknowledge that she comes to check this out, that she's a regular attendee at these pre-town meetings, and appreciates all that she does.
I didn't notice her.
She could say something.
Do you need another hug?
Don't get him too scared.
The first one almost killed our new chief. Okay. The article with the most checks by it, was eight by the way, believe it or not, is Article 15. And Article 15 states, "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide $9,950 for preliminary study of town streetlights by an energy consultant with the goal of saving money and reducing our carbon footprint or take any actions relative thereto." No one wants to say anything?
Well, we have at least two members here. We do. Yes. So, I'm Beth Gershman, I'm a Sustainability--
Could you project a little bit?
My jet--
Why should I go around the side?
Come up here.
Come up there.
I'll stand there, Jody. So, I'm Beth Gershman, and this is Jody Lally, and we are two members of the fairly recently formed Sustainability Committee. The Select Board asked us to take up the issue, the question, of transitioning the streetlights in our town to LED streetlights, which will save energy and money. Seems fairly straightforward. Turns out, not so straightforward. Just to make it a simpler question, Jody, just feel free to chime in any time here. So, Eversource, which everyone is familiar with, offers a program to do this. So, it seems like, okay, we'll just turn it over to them. The question is, is that they have one kind of streetlight, one kind of LED, one kind of wattage, and people have reported that this is glary and non-dimable, and the color choices are very harsh.
And they burn out.
And they burn out faster. So, and there is a cost per light of yearly maintenance if you went with the Eversource program. So, apparently, they do it for free, but then it costs more in the long run.
What is the cost?
Whatever. People are not too surprised. So, Jody and I and the Sustainability Committee started looking into this more seriously. We started out by making, creating a map of all the streetlights in town. There are 67, by the way, although Chris and I, maybe there's 68.
Yeah, I think there's 68.
Also, can we just say, by comparison, how many streetlights does Ashville have?
17.
Yeah.
What was that?
17. How many streetlights does Shelburne have?
Shelburne has 100. We've been very fortunate in that they have done tremendous jobs studying this issue, and they have given all of their information to us. We've attended meetings there. They're like so available for anyone who has questions about it. And the town just overwhelmingly voted to support their proposal.
Is that Shelburne? Shelburne.
Shelburne.
Which includes Shelburne. Yeah. So, they've given us, as Jody said, they've given us a tremendous trail to follow, more than a trail, actually, a highway to follow, with a lot of information and data. And the first step in this process is hiring an energy consultant to take a look at the existing lights and make some recommendations for what companies would provide what you might want, because there's more than one company providing different kind of lighting, depending upon what you ask them to assess for you. Members of our committee have met with Ron Sweet and our police chief as well, whose name I've just--
Don.
Don, right. Thank you so much. And they put in their recommendations. We would anticipate meeting with people in the village of, you know, the sector of town for their opinions as well about streetlights that they might perhaps want to turn off. I'm getting that sense from people. Look at that person, very much so. And a number of people in town have raised the issue of dark sky, you know, the dark sky sort of guidelines with us, and that is something that, of course, we would take into consideration, whether or not we formally adopted it. We would, as well as going with a streetlight that is dimmable, because there's a lot of good reasons for that, and a good, like, color range and long-lasting and energy efficient, you would want them that are shielded so they go down rather than out. So, there's less bleeding out onto people's homes and in their bedroom windows, all those things. That's where we're at with this. But the first step that we're coming to tell me and to ask for is not to exceed $10,000, $9,900 for a consultant to, and we have been looking into working with the same company that worked with Shelburne.
And just to add to that--
Yes, thank you, Brett.
Yeah, sorry. To add to that, I know the discussion had come up before, before even I was a member. I know you two had talked about it. I did want to see if we could get grants to be a dark sky community. So, kind of push this again, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, a lot of this is about to see what lights we need and what we don't need. And beautifying the town is not only what you can see during the day, but at night as well. It'll help wildlife, of course, get rid of the phosphorus bulbs, replace them with LED bulbs. Like Beth said, the caps, so the light faces down where it needs to go instead of out, which is a huge part of what you need to do to become a dark sky community.
And on the plus side, it will save energy and it will save money.
Yes, in the long run, it'll save money.
But to get there, we have to spend money to get there.
Well, also, I mean, Verdi knows a lot more about this, but there is money available in the Green Communities Program that would be eligible for grants.
Yes.
So, it wouldn't just be coming from the town budget as it exists now. I mean, in fact, for the $9,000 study, there is some funding available, I understand. So, it's just a question of, you know, getting started. And as I said, we have a huge amount of information, and I'm happy to share that with anybody who's interested. We have a copy of the report that Shelburne presented to their town meeting about this group, so if anyone's interested.
And I just want to say that they had like a final dollar amount of figure, an annual figure that they estimated that they would save, which was pretty significant. I can't remember what it is now, but, yeah, I can't remember. Mary, you have a question?
Are the lights in the school parking lot considered streetlights because they have been something I've complained about for decades, and they're way too bright all night?
I know, I didn't see them on that list.
They're not on the list.
And maybe added, because if you talk about dark sky, the brightest thing on this end of town is that parking lot at 11 o'clock at night.
Well, I think this is not just a question for us, but for the school committee as well, for sure. I think, what do you think, school committee members?
Take that school committee. I've talked to people for years about this.
Yes, yes.
I expect that there's going to be far fewer lights at the end of this process. For example, I live on Academy Hill Road, and there's five lights on Academy Hill Road. It's a very short light. And I understand, I've only been living there for six years, but people who've been around much longer, I've learned that the reason for those lights was when the old school was up the hill there, and kids had to walk, you know, when it got dark in winter. So, I would say on Academy Hill Road, at the very most, you'd need one.
So, yeah, so there's some historical reasons why we have the lighting that we do in town, and that's part of what the energy consultants would help us look at and focus on. Bob Armstrong, you have a question?
I'm shocked the number is 68. Is it possible to summarize where they are?
We have a list. I can say--
Mostly on 116.
There are a bunch of them as well.
Waverly Road, Academy Hill Road.
There are reasons, of course, that I'm sure Don and I could speak to about why you'd want them at intersections and things like that. There's safety reasons involved in this as well. So, we can't turn them all off. Some of us would like to, but we can't. Yeah. Yes.
So, this consultant would help, would work with your committee to figure out a proposal?
They do the initial study, the proposal, they come back to us with their recommendations, and then they would be ready to go out to bid.
And the bidding?
Out.
They look at every single streetlight and report on each one, like, should it stay, should it leave, you know, what kind of lighting would be best in this area. And I believe they're also willing to talk to community local--
One of the things that would come out of this likely is, oh, no, that's too complicated. We might talk about that. Never mind. Don't wind it down that road.
But there will be public forums, I'm sure, once the report comes out.
Absolutely. Yes.
I can give what Shelburne has to explain, what the recommendation--
Yeah, it's in the report. I don't remember. Do you remember the money, what they're spending initially to get to their--
No, I don't. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Was it like--
Is it available on their--
Yeah, we have--
I think it's actually in the recorder.
It's in the recorder. I apologize for not bringing that information. I'm sorry.
And they have--
Bring it to town, maybe. Yeah.
This company that we're proposing to use is the same company that they used, and they were very pleased with their work.
Yeah.
Good, so we don't have to--
Great.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you.
It's weird you have so many unknowns. Thanks, Beth.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next most popular thing to talk about would appear to be Article 27. Okay, I'm just going to clear everybody up on this before you start, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from the Community Preservation Fund, with each item considered a separate appropriation, or take any other action thereto." You can address--
So, I'm only here to talk about the pickleball courts, not the other CPA stuff. So, my name is Jan Warner. Most of you know me, I'm the treasurer and tax collector, and I've recently joined the Park and Racks Committee. And, you know, it's always a shortage of volunteers, so in about three minutes, I became the chair of the Park and Racks Committee. And so, what brought me to it, actually, is pickleball. So, a little over two years ago, I started gathering up a group of people to come play pickleball in Conway. As you may know, it's a big hit across the nation. It's been in Florida for quite some time, and it's just most recently become popular in the Northeast. And in Conway, we're loving it. So, right now, we have over 80 people that are regularly involved in our open play sessions. We play down on the ball field during the summer. On the, we started out on the two basketball courts. We had some lines painted out, and we've expanded and now we're taking over some of the tennis courts. And so, just to back up a little, we also have a Facebook community, and we just reached 200 members on our Facebook community, so that was kind of a big milestone for us. But all winter long, you may have noticed that we've been playing in the town hall gymnasium. The lights were on virtually every night up there. We had play sessions end to end, sometimes three in one night. People sign up and play. And, you know, I'm not running for Select Board, but you noticed your three Select Board members were very concerned about seniors. And this is a program that involves seniors. It involves people of all ages. We've seen some kids come out to play, some seniors play, and it's a lot of fun. So, we quickly grew to a size that we are overtaking the other space. Let me pass, sorry, instead of holding this, this is our sketch, and I wanted to pass it around. I'm going to put a projection in town meeting, but--
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah. So, I'm going to project a sketch at town meetings, you know, on the board so that you'll see it. But, so, let's see, where was I? So, we're planning on using community preservation funds. Probably most of you here know what community preservation funds are. They're, it's money that we've already saved, put aside. Currently, we have in the neighborhood of $1.5 million saved. It comes from your tax bill. It's 3% added on to your tax bill, and we've been saving it since somewhere around 2005, 2007 it came in.
The state budget.
And, right. So, in addition to your tax money, we get some additional funding from the state. It's not exactly 50/50, but we do get some money from the state to make up that number too. So, we have estimated our courts to cost about $150,000, which is an extremely low price for four courts, which is what we're proposing, because we regularly fill four courts. And the reason we're able to pull it off at such a low price is that our highway manager, Ron, is willing to do all the site work and work with his town bids and do, you know, the dirt moving and everything right up to the blacktop. And then I've gone out and got three different quotes from tennis court companies for the painting, the netting, et cetera. So, just kind of roughly broken down, about $93,000 of it is for site work and about $57,000 for the fence, nets, trees, et cetera. So, oh, I should have told you the location, sorry, like, one of the most important things. So, I'm terrible at directions.
Right back there.
Thank you. We're planning on putting it behind the grammar school. So, you would access it through the grammar school driveway and come right around the front of the school to the back. And then it would have its little own driveway entrance, its own parking area off the school, so it wouldn't affect any school parking. Now, we've met with the principal and the superintendent, the police chief, all about safety concerns, because there are some safety concerns with the additional traffic that may come and go from the school. And, you know, we've heard it from parents, and we've heard it from staff members, and we never want to say that there's no concern, that there's no problem here. What we want to tell you is that we feel that we've addressed it, and we're proposing, and this was actually Kristen's idea, putting in a couple of speed bumps. People can decide if they like them or not. Generally, speed bumps get taken away, but we're willing to give it a try. So, we're talking about removable speed bumps, so they can be plowed, they get pulled off and Ron can still plow in the winter. And so, we're proposing two speed bumps, one down at the playground and another one on the back corner as you come around the grammar school. There's a little bit of a blind corner there. And in addition, a solar-powered speed sign as you come in to identify your speed, and it'll flash slow down or, you know, speed up maybe. In talking with Kristen, our principal, and Darius Modesto, superintendent, they feel that the safety concerns have been adequately addressed, and they've told me in a meeting that there's no reason for them to stop this, and, you know, they support going forward with it, and they're willing to speak about that at town meeting. Let's see, what have I left out?
About timing.
Yeah, okay. So, the timing would be hopefully sometime this summer, to be finished by winter. We do have one little catch in the whole program, and that is that we have a small personnel, I wouldn't say small, but we have a personnel issue between Ron and the Select Board. So, at this time, he's not willing to do the work. He kind of withdrew from it, but we really believe that that's going to be resolved, and I'm going to be asking everybody to have faith that that will be resolved. And worst-case scenario, from our end, of course, there's a lot of, you know, problems with that, but from our end, if it's not resolved and we voted the money, the money will just go right back to the CPA committee, because we need Ron to even start the project. So, we're never going to get started and be stuck. We need him to start. So, I've gone outside to some bigger construction companies and asked them what our courts would cost if we didn't have our own people doing the work, and it would be in the neighborhood of $350,000. So, it's because of prevailing wages and state bidding and so forth, it's pretty big savings. So, without that, our project would just not go forward and the money would be returned. Go ahead.
Would that affect all the trails behind the--
It would not. The trails would stay just as they are. Yeah. Yes.
What about the sound? I was coming out of town hall and I heard, "Puk, puk, puk." And I was quite a ways, I mean, I was--
So, yeah, let me just admit, but so far, we've had absolutely zero complaints down at the town ball field. So, people are used to hearing noise down there. So people are used to hearing noise down there. People are used to hearing noise over here by that highway department. In fact, it's gonna be much louder than our pickleball noise will ever be. We're planning on surrounding it with some buffering trees and maybe some built-up dirt. Ron's gonna see what he can do about that. And so Mary McClintock is the closest neighbor there, and we've spoken with her about it.
Right, so I'm Mary McClintock. I live directly downhill from this. This will be between the highway garage, mountains of materials, et cetera, that, where there's work twenty-four-seven and a lot of trucks. And then my house down the hill. I came, when I first heard about it, I came and chatted with Jan and the others about it. And I was concerned, because I kept hearing about issues of sound. I think particularly in really built-up areas where there are multiple courts, there can be issues with sound. And so then I went down and hung out by the, by the ball field.
On our busiest day ever.
On our busiest day ever. And I stood at the parking lot, the lower parking lot, and I listened from there. And then I went and stood right next to it and listened from there. And my thought is, this is a lot quieter than the highway garage. And that it wasn't an issue. The other concern I have, which I think is part of, is being worked on in the design, is that that hillside is a, it's got, the overall hillside has multiple isolated wetlands and seeps. And I'm downhill of that and with, like, this last year and the high water table, a lot of water comes down that hill. And particularly with the highway department having made more impervious surface by spreading stuff out, the concern about if you have more paved surface, is this gonna cause more runoff happening quickly? So I think in part of the design, they're working on stormwater issues and retention issues, because that's, that was another concern of mine personally.
Right, so it's not gonna resolve the problem that you currently have, but we're not gonna have to.
Right, that's.
So there'll be perimeter drainage around the courts, so that no additional water flow.
Right, so that's, right, so not make, not make that situation worse. But, I mean, otherwise, it is, you know.
So what I also want to just, hold on just one second. We've gotten a lot of questions like, well, you know, should you maybe just don't play during school hours? And I thought that we would, and the principal agreed to this, just not restrict it from the beginning, but it will be widely passed around the pickleball community. And we have actually a very tight community. We have Facebook, we have emails, we have signups. There's a lot of ways to get in touch with our pickleballs, but pickleballers. But let people know that they probably shouldn't come during pickup and drop-off time, avoid those times. And generally, anyway, our popular play times are later in the afternoon, after school. We play four to seven right now. So we don't really see it being any large impact on the school traffic during the school day. Go ahead.
You probably said this in the beginning, but are these courts to replace the ones that are over there now?
Yes, so we would completely vacate from the ball field area, so the basketball players and the tennis players can have their space back.
Well, I also live very close to it, and I must say, sometimes it does bother me.
The noise, yeah.
Yeah, but I understand there are some balls that you can get that are a bit quieter. I, you know, in reading about.
Yeah.
Other cities.
They're starting to make quiet, there's paddles you can buy that are quieter, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Just how popular they get, how fast.
Right.
Two questions for you, Jan. First one, of your eighty members you have now, how many are town residents?
A good majority of them. Not all of them. We welcome players from all of our surrounding towns. We have several players that come pretty regularly. As do our Conway players, go down to Deerfield or Shelburne Falls. That's a really wonderful.
Could you have a number for town meeting?
The actual number?
Yeah.
Sure.
My other question is, do you intend on lighting these courts?
No lights.
None at all? Not now or in the future?
I'd never say never, but that's not any immediate plan.
My only concern, because Mary is concerned about the lighting out here. If you lit that up, that's really gonna light.
So if it ever were to get lights out, it'd have to go to town meeting vote. So that's not the plan right now. We understand the need for dark skies and people's peace and quiet in the evening, and that's not the intention.
I was wondering about, you know, sort of being in the center of town, there's like a sort of visibility, like an ease of sort of dropping by and welcoming new members. And so if you move sort of out of town to this like relatively invisible location, how do you, do you have thoughts about how you will, like, continue to invite and welcome people to?
Yes, I mean, we have our Facebook. We put it in the newsletter quite frequently. And then just word of mouth, it's just a lot of people are.
Well, you have an email list. I mean, I don't play, but I'm on the email list because I'm interested.
Yeah, we have a huge email list.
We have quite a few staff in the school to play, too, so it's quite the bonding activity.
And the school gym teacher is interested in bringing the kids out there.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so the kids will be able to use it. And the design of it is such that it leaves it open to other uses as well. So we made it, the design will be similar to how the tennis courts are, where there's permanent fencing at the end and then nets that come across. So say, I mean, I just thought of examples, if you wanted to have a concert out there, you can pull open the nets. You can set up a band. People can sit on the lawn and have a concert. That's not why we're building it, but we wanted to leave it open just in case. Yep.
How many parking spots you gonna play?
Oh, I lost count. It's somewhere around twenty. Don't quote me on that, though. It's fifteen, twenty.
This is emergency access for fire apparatus if this building catches fire.
Yeah, we will not be parked in the school parking lot.
The boiler room's the most highly part of the building that would catch fire.
There's plenty of room out there for overflow if we fill our spots. We can even put a sign if you want. We won't be using the school parking lot.
Can you speak a little bit more about Ron potentially doing the site work? And is he gonna be using town equipment? And how is that all gonna work out?
So, yeah, so he will be using town equipment and he'll, will be purchasing the materials, but will be using the current bids that he has in place. So he bids out materials for the whole year, so we can take advantage of that. We don't have to go out to bid and everything for his materials. We don't have to go out to bid for the internal labor that we do. So that simplifies things quite a bit. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it's, he's doing this a long time?
So he'll be doing this for overtime. So it'll be not during his regular workday. We'll be paying him overtime out of the CPA funding. Him or his employees.
Is there any liability?
It's a town project, so he's covered as a town employee making overtime.
And the other question, you mentioned putting in trees. How is he gonna move out?
Do you have any recommendations? We haven't chosen any.
Can you talk about that later?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Okay, come for fun.
Hi, Donnie Bates.
Hello, sir.
The next article, Article 11. By the way. Article 11, see if the town will vote to transfer eighty-five thousand dollars from capital stabilization or otherwise provide for a police cruiser, including upfitting, or take any action relative thereto.
Do you want me to do it?
Ah, you can start.
I'll start it.
You can start and I'll join you.
Yeah, I was, all right. I'm Phyllis Crane, 320 Neapoland Route. I'm the chair of Capital Improvement Committee with Bob Armstrong and Chris Waldo. So the need for this cruiser was brought to our attention when Chief Bates came to us and made a request, because it turns out that in the entire town of Conway, there is only one cruiser. And you have how many officers? Four?
We got four.
Five.
Five. Which I thought, I thought that was really interesting, because right after we found this out, I was driving up 116, one of us went down here, who's on finance today. And you were doing in detail, like on 116, like right where the Conway Millstone is? It had something to do with, you know, on 116. What was interesting was you were there, one of your officers was there, and the cruiser was there, and there was another car there. And was that like someone's personal vehicle? So I thought that was an interesting dilemma, because it was right on 116 where it turns up and it goes past the bank. And it occurred to me that in the best safety scenario, that should've been a cruiser. Because it was official police business, and if you're coming down, if you were coming in the opposite direction that day, what you would've seen is you would've seen someone's private car stopped on the side of the road without knowing why it was stopped on the side of the road. Whereas if there had been a police vehicle there, it would've been obvious that it was on police business. So one of the things that we do in capital improvements is, this is an improvement that we made this year, with Varaneek's help, and it was really useful, I think. It was, all of the department heads have to make a capital request on a specific floor, so that everybody's on the same playing field. And another innovation that we did this year is we now have a capital improvement schedule, which is a large spreadsheet that Chris Waldo put together, that basically takes the capital improvements requests out several years. So now that the town can, the people on the committee and anybody in the town can actually see what capital improvements requests are coming up in the next couple of years, and nobody should be surprised. And the other thing that we do on the committee is, one of our metrics is, the department heads, you know, Chief Bates and other people, is they have to tell us their need. And I have to say personally, as my experience in the chair, all of the town departments that make capital improvement requests, the highway department, the fire department, the police department, there, it is a genuine need. It's not a nice to have. They have to demonstrate that it's either for public safety, town improvement, or something related at a large, in a large way that benefits everybody in the town, because everybody has to rely on the police department at some point. Everybody has to rely on the roads being well. So when we, when we, when we make the recommendation for capital improvements, that really is the metric that we use. You were gonna say something, Chris?
No, you did for your job. I mean, take all of that out. The biggest issue is we have absolutely no contingency plan if the cruiser's not in use.
And we have five officers.
Right, so even if you take the officers away, we only have one officer, you only have one cruiser. And what happens when that cruiser gets a crash or breaks down? I know Kenny had a problem a couple of years or a few years back, where the cruiser was in, being serviced for a month, and I think he got almost forty calls during that time.
Oh, right, right.
And luckily, there was nothing severe, but that could've been extremely bad. You know, we have a stability fund for a new pumper. We have a stability fund for a new ambulance. And, stabilization, I'm sorry, stability? Stabilization fund for a new pumper, a new ambulance. And we have to keep increasing every year, because the cost is increasing at a rapid level. So that's another thing, is even if we, you know, if we get the funding for it, we're still probably waiting eight months to the year to receive the cruiser. And the cost could potentially go up by then.
Right, we still have a situation where we have five officers.
So the money that's being asked is not just for the cruiser, but for the upfitting of it as well, because obviously you can't just buy it.
How many hours are on the current cruiser?
Idle hours?
Yeah.
Four hundred thousand. No, four hundred thousand miles.
The equivalent.
The equivalent of four hundred thousand miles.
On the existing cruiser?
On the existing, yes. For idle, when you factor in idle hours.
So would that cruiser, that become the backup cruiser?
Yes, it would be.
Yes, so there will be two.
Right, that would be huge, in a contingency.
Correct, or if two officers are needed.
Yeah, like a detail or something.
Right, so they're not using personal vehicles, a lot of detail.
Right.
Which I'm not in charge of.
Select Board and Finance Committee just approved a four thousand dollar repair bill for the existing cruiser.
Four thousand?
Four thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not four hundred thousand.
No, it was, yeah, it was, it was around, yeah, four thousand dollars. And that's not the first repair bill that we've had this year. That was the next.
Yes, sir.
In our last meeting, I think it was you passed around a document. I don't wanna try to remember the numbers of how many cruisers the towns around us have.
Yes.
Do you remember any of those numbers?
I believe Ashfield is three or four.
Three, right here.
Yes.
Which one do you want to know? Well, we'll go with Ashfield. Simpler towns. Ashfield's got two cruisers. Goshen's got three, Colrain two, Plainfield has four.
Geez.
Williamsburg's got three. Wateley's got four. I won't say Deerfield. Hatfield's got three.
Buckland?
Buckland Shelburne has seven. Gil, Gil has three.
Nobody with one.
We are the only one that I looked at, and I've got quite a list, that I call. We are the only one with one car. And when you look at the geographical area that we cover, if you take out Buckland Shelburne, which merged, take out Leverett Wendell, which merged, and Berniston Lyden, we're the third largest square footage behind Ashfield and Colrain.
How many does Leverett have?
Leverett and Wendell, they've got four cruisers.
That's, you need a couple more.
Sixty-four. No, we don't have a couple. Just one more.
Sixty-four square miles.
Sixty-four, sixty-four square miles, yeah. And it's also sixty-four road miles.
According to Wikipedia, it's thirty-seven point nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's sixty-four road miles, thirty-seven point nine square miles.
If you take Buckland Shelburne, for instance, combine their forty-three point three, two towns in the.
And they have seven.
And they've got seven. But you also, you remember, they combine two police departments, so their numbers could be a little smaller.
Compelling numbers.
Yeah.
I think this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, same.
But you don't really just make the decision tonight.
Does anyone have any other questions on it?
Oh, it was a good job.
I have a question about, I know, because I work for the federal government. So if you use your personally-owned vehicle, you know, that's like an exception. Like, you don't usually do that. And I assume, like, does, are personally-owned vehicles, like, covered by town insurance or something when you have to?
I don't know, and I don't wanna find out. I like my pickup. I don't want it smashed, and I can't go camping. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
I'm curious, how many, like, I mean, obviously, there was a time when they were you and another officer out at the same time, but generally, how many officers are working at once?
Just one, typically. But if we have like a parade in town, we've been relying heavily on state police. I've come up when I was working in full-time, and Wateley, I've come up to help with parades. We've had Deerfield recently come up to help us out. So we wouldn't have to rely on outside towns for that. We have the two cars.
We've had a reciprocal week aid in Deerfield.
Nope, no, we have a mutual aid, and we all work really well with each other, so.
Nice job. Okay, since we have, since we have more time left, next article, there's actually a tie, two with four checks apiece. We can either talk about the purchase of a rubber tire compact loader, or we can talk about the purchase of a plow truck.
Talk about a boat. What?
So, yeah. They are nine and ten.
All right, so I can give a synopsis of both.
Let me just say one thing. That green handwriting is mine. That was a correction that I made to facilitate discussion.
I was pointing.
Do you want me to talk about the pickup truck, and you can talk about the loader?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. So, the pickup truck. The current pickup truck we have is the only passenger vehicle that the highway department owns. It has been in and out of the repair shop for years, for multiple weeks at a time. It's twenty years old, twenty-year-old vehicle. It is used for multiple things, to include attaching trailers, to move equipment, whether that's the wood chipper, the wood box, or any other various things that need to go onto a trailer. Right now, the vehicle still has issues. Right now, the vehicle still has issues. Unfortunately, our super has been using his personal vehicle, his second personal vehicle, actually. He used a truck that he had that subsequently broke down and has been using a van. So if you see a little maroon van running around town, that's our super's van that's going around and checking out the manholes. I know I've seen it go up and down the road. So again, this is, this isn't even a contingency issue here. This is more of, we have a broken piece of equipment, it's outdated, it's twenty years old. This is a major need for the highway department. Do you have anything to add to that?
I was just going to say, if you went to town meeting last year, I was sure you were going to do it.
It was, it was. Yep, and the prices again, just keep going up and up and up. So if it would, if it would have won last year, or won, if it would have gotten voted last year, it would have been, what, twenty-five thousand less than this year? Yes, sir.
Do you want to check your age on the truck?
Two thousand eight.
I retired in two thousand and thirteen, and it was purchased after I retired.
Okay, I'll check that out. I have it as a two thousand and eight document.
Was it bought new?
It was bought new after I retired.
Bought new after you retired.
Was it bought new?
I believe so.
Okay.
How many miles on the truck?
Maybe it was bought second-hand, but I didn't...
I don't have the miles, but I'm fairly certain.
Does anyone remember that during the town meeting, it said a hundred and twenty thousand?
I believe so.
Yeah, so...
I know it's over a hundred.
Right, and it's a plow truck.
It's a plow truck.
Well, yeah, I mean, it has attachments, that's the whole thing, is there's a ton of attachments for this truck.
Right.
Right? So from the plow to, I've got the whole list here, but, you know what, I have it as a two thousand, a two thousand four Dodge Ram thirty-five hundred.
That would make it twenty years.
So I have to check, I have to check on that.
And every second-hand, you got it?
Yeah.
Would you have to buy all new attachments to...
No, no, no new attachments. We want a light for it, like. So Ron's been looking at the exact style to be able to use every attachment there. And that includes the hitch on the, in the actual bed of the truck.
At town meeting, Ron mentioned repeatedly that that was the only backup plow truck that they have.
That's correct, yeah. And we're hoping to get more employees.
If another truck broke down, that was the one that they had to lie on to keep the roads clear.
That's correct.
And that it was unreliable.
Yes.
Now it's more so.
It didn't get any better.
Yeah, a year later, it's fine.
Just a correction with the warrant, includes a bead plow.
It's very stuck.
Yes.
Article ten, one ton four-door short-bed six-cylinder diesel with new bead plows.
Got it. Well, there are a lot of other attachments that, that will be used.
Yep, bead plows weren't a thing in that truck.
Oh, because he does have a, I'm sorry, yeah, in the yard, you can see he does have, it's not the bead plow, right? He's got the one that shoots to the side.
Here in this meeting, corrections like that are really welcome, you know, don't hold back. That's the whole purpose of this meeting, is to let people practice giving these kinds of presentations.
I'll definitely verify the age.
Yeah.
Just open the glove box?
I want to run.
Ron, want to talk about the loader?
Okay, so, I've got that loader.
Could you do me a favor and pretend you're talking to me from your house?
Pretend I'm talking, ah, louder? I can do that. Yes, thank you, thank you. So the compact loader also was on town meeting last year. It did not pass. This is, this piece of equipment is probably one of the most critical that the highway department uses. And for example, pickleball courts, I have no reason to believe the compact loader wouldn't be used to do the work on the pickleball courts when the time comes for that. The current issue with the one that the highway department has is the one that is owned by the town is not operational. It is sitting over there, not being used. One of its many problems is that it has a track motion system, not a rubber tire system, which according to Ron, the superintendent, makes it much less versatile for his purposes. And because the, he just, the highway department does not have an operational compact loader owned by the town, Ron Sweet has a handshake agreement with an individual who owns one, and when he needs it, he calls him up. Somebody from the highway department has to go, probably in the truck that Chris just described. Two people have to go, they have to get the compact loader, and they have to bring it back, use it, and then return it to the, to the person that they rented from. Not a good use of highway department time. I'm sure those employees could be doing lots of other things for the town, other than going to pick up rented equipment from another town. And I've actually seen this piece of equipment in person, and it is, it's just, there's so much rust on this, on this thing. It's just, it's just astonishing. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there are a bunch of attachments with the compact loader that would be usable on a new one, correct?
That's correct, and the new loader would not have tracks, it would have wheels.
Yep.
So maintenance would be a lot cheaper.
Yes.
Repairs would be a lot cheaper, current vehicles of two thousand fourteen.
And it would be, the entry into the vehicle would be different, which I believe Ron felt was a safety and a comfort issue for the operator, right?
Correct, because...
A side entry as opposed to a front entry?
As opposed to, no, a front, yes, a side entry as opposed to a front, because if the loader, if one of the attachments gets stuck, and it blocks the door.
Yeah.
That has happened to me before.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
So, at town meeting, Ron just touched on this, I think it's important, just to lay it out, he said it was a bad, it was a bad choice, the machine.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was a contractor, retired contractor, I purchased heavy equipment, you know, I thought it skids here, it was the wrong machine.
Mm-hmm.
We had, we had to just make a change.
It happens.
This is a trap machine, and it doesn't serve its purposes.
That is correct.
And I think, and I'm going to be focused on why this particular machine, because it's not really that old. You know, every piece of heavy equipment, it rusted, it's rusty, but it's functional now, for what, for what it was designed for. It was designed for a different usage than we needed. And I would have been convinced, although in favor of the new machine, had, had Ron just come right out and said, this doesn't work for me, and this is why. The machine was functional, it's, it's not that old, but I just wasn't convinced that the trap machine wouldn't do what he needed it to do, because he didn't, didn't really explain that.
Well, yes, go ahead.
So would you be able to sell this track thing to somebody who could use it?
That's my question, is they going to trade in, go to new one?
That's an unanswered...
Are we going to leave it in the junkyard out there?
Well...
No, it would definitely be traded in, I'm sure it would be traded in.
But it would be...
But I don't have a value for it at all.
No, I know that's not operational. Usually, usually when we replace a piece of equipment that's not being used, it gets traded.
Yeah, there's no space for it anyway.
It's not operational.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't work, it's not operational.
It's not traded in.
No, and they said that.
The compact motor that is owned by the town is not operational. That is why the highway department has been renting one for two years now, at least, right? At least two years.
Was it not operational last year?
No.
No.
Well, it was, but it broke down every time, right? Like, so he would use it for a couple hours and it would break down.
And I actually saw them using it on our road, on Main Paulan Road, when we had the catastrophic flooding last year, and I was not encouraged by what I saw.
I don't know if you, do you know where the Jan Mag house is? I don't know if you remember, last year it was sitting there for like two months.
Yep.
Because they were working on it last year, and it just broke down.
So there, there was a concern last year, I mean, people brought this up, like, why don't we just get it operational then? But I think that's to your point, Nelson, that if it just, it's like, it's like, what would it cost to get it operational, is one question? But to your point, if it's even operational, it's not serving...
The most important issue is that it's not functional the way that Ron needs it. He needs a different machine, it doesn't work. Even if it's brand new, it doesn't, it wasn't the right machine.
Okay, yes.
That's what, that's what I am...
One other question, when I was hiring superintendent, if we were going to trade a vehicle in toward another newer one, you had to have that on town meeting for article that says, and will include the trade of the old vehicle. Is that what's happening today?
It's not on the article currently, but...
Is that some laws that was only made up years ago? I don't know, I mean, they require me to have it in the specifications of the new order, new machine, that there was an old one going to be traded in.
So it's not something that can get amended to the...
Yeah, like Tom said, amended on the floor at town meeting.
Is that legal, is that a legal, that's not changing, I mean, like, is it a legal amendment because it's not, it's still within the main purpose of the thing? You couldn't say, you couldn't amend it to say to buy a compact loader and something else?
Right, it doesn't substantially change.
Well, what I was told was because we originally purchased the old one, it took a town meeting vote to purchase the old one, and it should take a town meeting vote to trade it in toward another.
But where is that information, Bob?
I, that's what I was told for twenty years.
Well, the article that's written doesn't mention anything about a trade, it's just a new purchase, so. And I don't recall, was that in the article when you purchased the fire truck? I don't recall that being...
No, because it's not, it didn't trade in the town council.
No, 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 the one that you just got, two years ago?
Yeah.
Was the trade-in in the language?
No, because Ron, don't be...
Yeah, Ron, Ron has it.
Ron kept it. The town kept it. The highway department uses it, yeah.
The old fire truck.
The old fire truck.
Not the fire truck, no, 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 you're, the one that you, the pickup.
It didn't have it before.
Yeah.
Never had pickup before.
You had the cruiser.
You had the cruiser, but you had another vehicle that you used.
The old cruiser, yes.
Right, but that, but that was not...
That was traded in, yes.
But that wasn't in the language of the warrant?
I don't, I don't...
I don't think it was. In any case, I can certainly check the town council. Who will be at town meeting, so she can answer that question for us.
Are they going to do that with the pickup truck too, though, trade it in for a new one?
The pickup truck, no, no, they would, that is backup.
Well, you just said it's in the shop, more than out of the shop. Why do they want that? To keep it, even they have other trucks?
I don't think that truck will be worth anything traded in. And, you know...
No, I'm just curious.
Right, I mean, they want, they, we'd rather have a backup for plow.
I was going to say, a backup that works for two days is better than no backup at all.
So, so that sounds like it'd be great for town meeting to have the specifics of can we have the language, is the trade-in language in the article, and a clear, clarity about each of the, the equipment requests, and what's going to happen to the old equipment? Like, you know, like, is it a trade-in, is it a backup? That, but that...
I don't think Tom's answer is going to be answered.
Yeah, she'll, she'll be at town meeting, so she can...
But, but, yeah, just...
Because it's not in the warrant language right now, so it would have to be amended on the floor.
Right, it would have to be amended.
Well, they're already at town council for approval, so. And because these already went by town council, there was a question, normally she gets